As we know Tristan is joining us, yeah? For seven years. We don't.
Recording in progress.
John? Sorry? There you go. Okay. Welcome everybody, I'll call over to the Wednesday, October eighteenth meeting of the Trinidad Atlantic Commission, if we could have a roll call please.
Uh, Chris Schley.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Hagen.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Yeah.
Alright, um, one note, I know we're working hard, city staff, it sounds like I'm getting the audio improved, I know it continues to be an ongoing challenge as someone that listens and goes back to recordings on occasion, so. Just a request again to try and remember to point your mouth at the microphone as much as you can, which is hard when you're trying to make eye contact as we're having a conversation, but I don't know what the happy medium is, I know they're working on stuff, but. Put that out there, uh, because I did actually run across a member of the public today who said that it's, the audio is just awful, listening to meetings, so anyway, throw that out there.
Yeah, we had our, uh, S T R meeting last Monday night. Same here. We had the S T R meeting on Monday night and the audio was terrible. Uh, last night we had the trails committee meeting and it was great. Uh, and then today we have Optimum come in and increase our gigabytes within a new router, up to a billion gigabytes, so hopefully we're working.
Yeah, I think that'll dress part probably, but still just a, yeah.
Since you mentioned it, will it go over to the fire station now?
But I, I don't know, I, Anton Zen, I wasn't working on this together.
You mean the router? The range, yeah, I don't know, I don't know anything about the range, but yeah.
Just throwing it out, that came up.
Our department was trying to have.
And we can, or just do that offline, just keep moving, sorry. Alright, approval of minutes, we've got three sets of minutes, the first one is the April nineteenth meeting, I will need to abstain from that as I was not present. But any have, any have any changes from that one that they wanted to see?
Move to approve.
All right, second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, those are those minutes, next we have the July twelfth minutes, uh, Tom, it looks like he were absent from that one, so you'll need to abstain from that one. But were there any changes anybody else had? I had none. Right.
I move to approve the segments.
Second. Okay, motion second for the July twelfth, uh, all those in favor say aye. 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 Close, alright, four zero with one abstention. And now the September twentieth meeting minutes, uh, everybody was here for this one, uh, any changes? I had none.
I just wanted to thank whoever wrote the minutes so they can use that appearance during that period where I was collabing, so thank you.
I had just one. Uh, comment, uh, on page, uh. Packet page sixteen.
Yeah.
Uh, the full, second full paragraph where it starts, Parker also provided an update. Uh, I, I'm not objecting to anything here, but I was just curious if there were any further coastal commission, uh, concerns which might come up as a result of, uh. Uh, what we are going to be doing tonight in extending the, uh. Uh, closure.
No, um, I think they understand that it's closed for the moment, and we did just meet with coastal commission staff last. This Monday.
Yeah, my only question was that they did express concerns about the closure, I just wanted to make sure that. They're happy.
They're never happy.
They're, they're not objecting, let's put it that way.
Uh, move to prove the September twentieth minutes.
I move to proof.
Second. Alright, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Aye. Alright. Five zero, alright, moving off, uh, approval of tonight's agenda, are there any changes anybody wants to make to tonight's agenda, the order or anything like that? Okay. Right, those in favor? Aye. Okay, five zero, moving on. Items from the floor, any, doesn't appear to be anybody online, and there's nobody present here but, uh, city manager Eli, so I'm gonna assume there are no items from the floor unless Eli, you had something that fell into that category, okay? Um, alright, then moving on to the agenda items, item number one. Attention to the temporary closure of the actual memorial trail and the update on the closures, Trevor, take it away.
So it's unplugged and, um, we're already almost at six months, uh, so if you recall, um. It's back in April, the planning issue approved, uh, coastal development permit for temporary closure, which will be Parker Creek and Axolotl Memorial Trails. Uh, the Parker Creek closure was approved for only two months and it was repaired and reopened at Memorial Weekend, and so that one is, is done for the moment. Um, Axolotl Trail, um, the stairs that were holding the heart of the bottom were removed, so it's, and then the. Gymati was placed along the bottom for erosion control, still pets off, um, and it's really in no condition to have. Like access at this time, and one, it's, it's even most stops dangerous, wet conditions, slippery, um, as well as foot traffic could cause issue. That is recommending an additional, and I am suggesting a seven month closure because that will take us, um, to Memorial Weekend next year. Um, that is staff's goal to have that reopened, and. As far as everyone still have not gotten the report, I mean, the G H D report on the. Routing for the bottom of the trail, um, but Eli has asked the city engineer to come up with some, um, short term solutions to repair the trail in place. And this is something that a reroute would take more than a few months, anyway, um, so we're going to look at some repair options in place and put some that to the. So asking them to. This in terms of the update, um, the answer on which was.
Alright, any questions from the commissioners for Trevor?
I have two. One question and a comment, uh, one question is, um. Is this appealable to the coastal commission again?
The extension, yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, uh, and there's nothing in the coastal commission. Rules that say that, uh, once it's been disposed, deposed at the coastal commission, that there, there cannot be another appeal, I mean, it's, it, it starts the clock over again, I, I assume.
And for the extension?
Yes.
As opposed to the original?
Yes.
Yes, it will start.
Um, then my comment is, and I know that this is probably falling on. The years, but, um. I would really like to see at least some sort of schedule from the management team. On when, um, various things are going to happen, and what I mean by this, we're currently waiting for this report, we understand the reports available or has been published. Uh, but we, we, meaning the city, has not seen it. Uh, the management team, I know, has a lot under plate, lots of moving parts, but. I think it's incumbent on us to ask them for at least some top level milestones that we can. Pass on to the public, um, you know, we. Said we were not going to close this more than six months, and now it's another seven month in extension, and. Just concern that come next May, that, uh, we will not be prepared to open it, so. My comment.
I heard at the trail meeting, uh, last night, that they did, they, they're going to look at it, at it, ancestral society at the next. November. And, uh. But that, they didn't seem to be wanting to look at it with everybody before. Joining. And the city about it. So that's what I heard, you. Stay correct, but you were that. He's correct.
Uh, yeah, yes, you are correct, um, I had requested that, that the release to the city, and they said that they want to. Either present it at a city council meeting or the jury management team meeting, and then last night indicated they decided to send it at. Jury management. So then once, we'll receive it out and have.
Just for the record, the city bank it worth?
No, the seventh generation, uh, grant funds that the jurors. That's paying for it. But the, uh, I say, it's in November, but I'm not sure exactly.
Are those open to the public or no?
Well, we'll have to see, if, if they don't have any kind of cultural significance, then we'll have. Uh, chances are, since we're gonna be talking about the trail, that they might have something. Reopening that stuff. But we'll find out ahead of time, sometimes there isn't anything of cultural significance. Recordations to have a meeting open. Have, uh, that they meeting opens inside of them here. But, uh. The others, obviously, was before, before G to G. Must be important to G to G. By times.
Is there a way ahead of the meeting for you to reach out to them and express a desire to craft that portion of the meeting in such a way that as much as can be open, can be open, and they could perhaps adjourn to something akin to closed session? Uh, because I know, I would love to go to it and hear about it, uh, both as a resident and as planning commissioner.
Yeah.
And I think if we wait for them, they might not think of that, but if we suggest it, perhaps it might be something that they had not thought of as a, as a compromise. You know, because understanding the need to protect the cultural resources and where that stuff is, but I think there might be some way to do something. It could work.
Yeah, and ask ahead of the meeting, uh, which portion that they could consider.
And are they down with this opening in, from the part of the.
So, well, we, 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 yeah, management team meetings, if that's our goal, is to have it reopen by, they mentioned. How, uh, as Karen was mentioning, I, I asked the city engineer to come up with. Options, uh, so I think the. It's a way to access the beach from the base of the trail, and otherwise possibly reappear, since he's in a short term.
Yeah, I think this commissioner, Paul, has asked, maybe others, is it possible we are having a closed meeting with them, is that something that was discussed and was that feasible? I think commissioner. It's not.
I have no idea.
I, I, I think the planning commission as a body would have to have an open meeting. But, uh, if you wanted to designate a committee of two members that's not a court, then you could have a closed session meeting.
Something to look into, yeah, is an option, what would be, who would we reach out to and know if that's even a tool that we can utilize?
Oh, I, that's, that's our G to G policy, that we also apply.
And the planning commission would fall under that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and that's what would apply to the jury management team, otherwise the jury ancestral society, if you only meet with them and they agree to meet with you. Uh, then that could be closed, that's not required on their end, but on your end it would be required, so that's why I would suggest two representatives.
Uh, I have a couple of questions and a comment, uh. First is procedural. This, so this proposed seven month additional closure. Would that, that would not go into effect until after the appeal period, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, so I'm estimating the date, um. That the. When expired early in June twenty twenty four, so, uh, the appeal period ends ten days after the coastal commission receives this, so. Well, they just recently called that a question, but.
It's not, it wasn't passed this meeting.
I do need, so, under, in most instances, the local appeal period runs and then, and then there's coastal commission appeal period. Our ordinance, being first, we certified that it's mistakes and it's written so that the appeal period runs concurrently and our appeal period starts when the coastal commission receives. So it's always been ten days, they just, with the grant review, no. Last. Oh, with the after the fact record last month, they said, oh, no, you can't send this notification until your appeal period's open on our, but. I need to talk to them about, and I have talked to SAC about this in the past with the new SAC, so.
I'm sure it was gonna come on.
It potentially could, so it could be in June, I mean, a six month would be. You should take this to mid-May and that, I mean, maybe that's close enough.
Uh, another question I had, maybe for you, Eli, uh. This commission. With the last closure, been asking for temporary reopening measures. It's the team, it's your task, and I guess my question is why it's taking to open it out, start your outfit and notice.
Well, our city engineer was one who's prepared to report. Jury management for the jury ancestral society, uh, so it has been mentioned that we want to have it open, so, uh, we'll just try to get it as soon as we can.
Return suggestion. Yes, I was hoping, uh, whole manner. You know, it's. The whole, the. Yes, if they. Since they didn't reset it up until next month, uh.
So the goal announced is to start working on temporary measures, even if you don't have said before.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the goal, uh, the report will be available, like, like I said, uh. November. Somehow, somewhere between. Quick second. S- five minutes. Passing through some. See. I was just reviewing the report, will be able to give us an idea, some of the things that it's suggesting, and then we can say, okay, why don't you?
I guess lastly, uh, looking back at devotion, the conditions, or the way it was conditioned. Six months ago. There's number one, very end. Let's see, it says, left an extension is granted by the planning commission. Based on the need for more time to obtain funding, whether it's for better access alternatives, if the planning commission finds that substantial progress has been made in this time period. Currently, I can't find that substantial progress has been made. To look at square repair access strategies, um, temporary. I'm hung up on that, that condition. For redoing this, uh, closure.
If, if that's just. Yeah, if you want, you could request like an update in three months or something. You can have, you, otherwise we can give you your monthly update and then let you know how we're progressing.
If, if I can, I think, pick up the same thread, um, I'm really frustrated tonight. To have this in front of me and not have anything that we've been asking for repeatedly, uh, this was approved in April. In the July minutes, we, I thought very clearly directed that we wanted a plan B. We brought it up again in August, and now before us tonight, when we're up against the wall for an extension, we have no plan B still, our plan was just simply to hope that plan A materialized. And that's incredibly frustrating for me and why I will struggle with a seven month extension, because I have no faith. Or very little faith that something will change between now and then realistically with the final plan, um. We depend on staff to carry out what we ask for, and I just personally don't feel like that's happened with this at all, and it's incredibly frustrating. Um, this is a, a big issue, there's a lot of concern about this from the public level and. It, it's, it's just not, it's not there, I mean, we're up against a wall and we, again, there's, there's been no plan B yet, and I guess I don't understand. How we could have been or should have been more clear with our direction to develop that.
Yeah, so, so, uh. What we were looking at is that we were hoping that as soon as the report was done, we would get it. And I've been frustrated, except for requested it several times. Management team meeting, and, uh, they haven't produced, first they said they needed to go to the board for the ancestral society, and then later on they said that they wanted to present it at the meeting. The council, uh, then this last time they said they wanted to present it at the jury management. I was hoping that we would receive the plan, review the plan, and then by next April, they hopefully have those improvements done. But, yeah, we can't do all those improvements, then the plan B is for next year, meaning, uh, you know, after the rainy season, uh, then we would do whatever, uh, for term. Yes. Just like we were able to do the short term. Either way, it's, it's been clear that we wanted to have the trail open. Yes.
Yeah, I guess my recollection, recollection is that, you know, that's plan A, I understand all the things that have gotten away of that. I felt as though we were very clear in saying we wanted to see options for, while that's happening, what can we do to reopen it as soon as possible? And it's been, it's been four months, it's been four months and that hasn't happened, um, and I don't think it's a good plan for us to continue to hope for plan A to materialize in a timely fashion, so. I guess I'm asking very clearly, come back to us with the plan B. On what it is to reopen it now, in a temporary fashion, right, because I understand the end goal is to reroute it to a better location, right? But again, the, the goal is to restore access at least in the interim, or while this is going on, because I, my personal concern is that it's gonna languish, and this is gonna go on. And we already have one trail in town that is, had a de facto closure right now, right, because of serial extensions, and I, I, I just can't support that happening to another critical trail in town that is. One of two access points that beach, um, just the substantial progress piece, I, I feel the, similar with that, what. Having spent a little bit of time on the trails committee, the fact that these discussions are happening, the fact that there's a study being done. I have a little bit of faith with that, that feels like. The, the time scale obviously isn't what I would love to see, but it does feel like there's at least something happening, um. In the background at least, it's in the background, that's the frustrating piece for me, uh, not knowing this and, and understanding the, the challenge to be transparent with this because of cultural resources and all these things, but, uh. Alright, that's really all I have on that, um. Alright, any other? Anybody from the public? I see, uh. Councilman Tuttle has joined us, but I'll open it up to public comment if there is any. Then I'll bring it back to the commissioners for any additional discussion or questions.
Uh, I've got a couple of questions, uh, the first is, you know, we, we have been waiting for those reports, uh, to be produced, right, to be shared with us. And if, uh, if rerouting of the trail is better, that seems like it's gonna take a considerable amount of time. If we get that report tomorrow. I think. So a year, if real regarding, perhaps hopeful years. And so I think that, yeah, looking forward with some. Short term solution to get the. Is of both immediate benefit and buys us some time while that reroute process is actually taking place. Yes, my, my other question, first, I'm concerned. Is whether there is significant burden based on staff if we opt for several serial, serial extensions rather than one seven month. True of time to compel action, this actually tremendously burdensome.
It's a little more work, um, but I think, um, but it wouldn't be a ton more work, I mean, I'm providing the monthly progress reports anyway, so it's on the agenda anyway. Yeah, I will say, I think particularly with the Van Wick, um, project, um, we have had a fire lit on where us. Goes. So please take your time. That. Yeah, we like has asked city manager to come up with short term fixes, and we are gonna present those to the management team, and I, I think the city. We will likely opt to move forward with those, you know. Regardless of. Maybe in some way, if your gardeners are welcome, you know, even if the entrance wants to take a reroute, not just. But I think coastal commission has also. And in action. Soon.
It's hard to guess upon a report that we can't see, but is it a fairly safe assumption that current route will not be? Yeah, it's pretty likely there will be substantial change.
The, I mean, the management plan from. Two thousand and seven, I want to adopt the, and that recommends rerouting the major trip, so that has been something that the ancestral society's wanted a long time. Yes, I, I think that that is. Very likely the end result, um, but like you said, a reroute is likely to take. Here.
Give it, sorry, do any sense of where the base, where that kind of begins on it? You can speak to or?
Where the reroute begins?
Yeah, where the area of concern is without.
I believe they wanted to. Turn more off to the left, so they wanted to follow the traditional trail. So that's, but then, so that, so I think what the engineers looked at is, is, you know, how feasible that will that take? Because there is some wet areas there, you know, something to change. So how will that? Well, we haven't seen the report, so I.
And when you say left, did it take it more towards the Parker Creek Trail or?
To the west.
To the west.
So towards launcher. Okay.
And then all I know from my, you know. Impression from them and discussion is basically, if, mostly where it's. Drops right now, so somehow, somewhere right before it drops, it'd be diverted to the west.
So. Two questions. Who's paying for Plan A? The actual work. I understand that the ancestral society has funded this study. Who's paying for the actual?
It hasn't been determined. First of all, we don't know the exact cost. It's.
No, I completely understand that.
Right, but but the answer, I've told the ancestral society, I told them, if you expect the city to be paying for it, we need the report. So. The city property.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and I I appreciate that. And, you know, realistically, and I appreciate what you're saying about what happened if we. And told closures, probably extensions. But with the winter coming, not having the report, getting RFQs out, evaluating them, actually starting the work. In the midst of the winter, as I said. I don't, I don't see any benefit of that because as you just said, it's going to be a year before you're ready to start. The other thing I would just point out too, and I don't know this, but at one time, I do recall that the ancestral society wanted to re, to move. The entrance to the trail on the bluff as well. So if that's part of the report, that also just makes it more complicated, so.
Yeah, and and that could be, so. See the report, but you're right, that has.
Yeah.
But that has been done to some degree by the. Retaining all by the light house and.
Dude, that's not a big. To any longer, I know.
But I do think they want that western. Where the access used to be. Well, that has been, the walkway, that was removed, so that that has been removed. So I think the the entrance has been restored to basically their, their, their traditional.
And and the trails committee has actually. Discussed with the representative of the Turin. And Representative Turin said that they wanted to take it back to the ancestral society to discuss. How we're going to have the talk, you know, so. So we'll see if that's going to be addressed in order, if they're going to address it to the ancestral society. But either way, the the goal of the city is number one, have the work. Number two, ideally to keep it open, you know, even when they're doing the bulk of the work. Or rerouting base less. It seems like that could be done separate. And maybe if there is any needed closure, it could be a couple of days or something just to connect it to or whatever.
A procedural question for if the city were to. In some fashion reopen on a temporary basis, what permitting? Time line does that trigger for the city as far as permits for construction, that kind of stuff? It's been removed? Is it still considered repair? Just trying to think working backwards from a desired date of. Right memorial day.
That's a good question, and, you know, maybe in a future update, I could, I could provide a. I do. Yeah, I I guess I will walk back a little bit to policy sixty nine nine does require the ancestral society approval of any. Work soil disturbance, so. If we're just repairing maintenance, you know, that can move forward potentially that.
So as far as what I could gather. Whatever few steps may need to be improved for the short term. I would consider that maintenance and then the. Whatever is going to connect short term to beach, that's the part that would need some kind of. It's more than likely. That at the end.
Any other questions?
I want to mention, yeah, I understand why the rules are centered around. Royal Day, Labor Day, as the book has, the typical tourist season. There's three hundred residents of Trinidad who also use our chaos and re-hear your ground or of course, that's a bigger proportion. So it's a nice public space, but it's Trinidad regardless of extent which is.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. Certainly, we wouldn't want to have it open as soon as we can. So I just have that as a deadline that no matter what, we'd want to have it open by then. And I think it's in the interest of the ancestral society also, because they always say that they don't. They would rather have the trail open and they don't want people be entering in areas that don't have. So if we could have a trail open and just direct people that way, they'll be happy to move in. Sometimes people might create their own trust.
Yeah, to that note, I was just down there today. People are obviously going around fences and.
The absolute.
Correct. There was an obvious path, but why look, it came up from the bottom. There's an obvious path around fences.
Any other discussion? I'll take a stab at a motion. As written, but two changes I'd like to make. I'd like to add a condition. But under condition one, I'd like to modify the timeframe from seven months. To four. Because I feel like that gives a decent, like, the time to make some progress. I just can't see my way to seven. I just. Me and then the the second condition number two would be that the city manager is to return before or no later than one meeting before the next extension period with the Plan B, the developed Plan B.
That's the thing.
Certainly, we can name for that.
I mean, I guess, either I put you on the spot, is that reasonable? Four months to have the city engineer come back with what Plan B would look like? That gives all winter. I know they're busy, but this is.
Yeah, coming up with Plan B should not take much time. But as far as doing work, having weather. Likely, that's how long it's going to take, but, you know. It's going to be. Basically done, maybe until maybe March previous.
Sure, I'm just, I just want to have a Plan B every March.
But it certainly, you know, coming up with a plan, especially because he didn't work for the Plan A. You know, coming up with Plan B should only take maybe a month at max.
So I think semantics, I would just like to add, to specifically said Plan B. The Plan B is going to be Plan A for a substantial period of time, right? Like the, the, the trail. Is likely to be opened in some, in some fashion that is not the route recommended by the engineers report. So the, in my opinion, the city should be moving forward with. A Plan A, which is opening that trail as soon as possible. With. The intent to ultimately implement the reroute when information is available.
Yeah, I guess. I said in semantics, I just wanted.
Yeah, otherwise you could just call it the temporary of the day.
Right, temporary, yeah.
Yeah, let's.
So instead of Plan A, Plan B, right?
That's probably a short.
Yeah. All right, so I'll, I'll try this again here. Based on the fact that current conditions of the base, the trailer has risen unstable. I move to extend the coastal development permit for the temporary closure of the ALMT for another four months. As conditioned in the original approval with the modification of condition one as follows, changing seven to four. And then the addition of condition two, the city manager returns to us with a temporary reopening plan. No later than one meeting before it's the the next expiration of this extension.
I just have a really quickly rationale for, rather than three or two or five.
Five feels too long. Three, there's the holidays getting in the way. We've got November, December. I want to be real soon, that January. That's where I came up with four.
Okay, thanks.
So the current one would expire when in November till Trevor?
Yeah, and so four months from. Effective date, so this will go into effect. Say early November to November, December, January, February. So it would end. Early. March, so we'd have to. Come to January. Attention, we probably need to be.
So this is required for. I think stairs.
Sorry, just point of order. I mean, there is a motion. Is there a second for it? And we can have a discussion on the motion, I guess, if it, or it'll just kind of float away into netherness, which is fine, too, if we want to try something different. So we'll come back to the discussion then. I just want to kind of procedure to keep us clean.
Again, I'll, I'll reiterate what I said earlier. I think, I understand what you're trying to do and I, I share your. Frustration, but I don't see that it's any value added for us to come back and look at this in four months when in fact. There really is no benefit to that. I do like number two.
Okay.
I think that makes sense. I think it would be valuable to return, have the city manager or staff. Return with the short term repair, but man, that makes a lot of sense. But any of these things, because of some of the things that you've already mentioned, which is holidays, winter. Four months is not going to, all that does is just bring it back to us. We haven't. Talking about it, in my opinion. I would just assume, my, my feeling is that I would leave it the way it is, but add condition number two.
So, okay, that makes sense. The, I guess the itch I'm trying to scratch with, with this whole exercise is I really don't want to come back in seven months. And just then learn about what a temporary measure might be, you know what I mean? It's like, I don't want those two things to be.
I'm sorry.
Concurrent, you know what I mean? I want to.
I misinterpreted what then condition two was. I thought that was to be done in like the next month.
No, hopefully, yeah.
Let's, well, I think we're going to get mine on condition, the other condition. Uh, answer.
Yeah, three months.
So maybe. And and we do have a condition two, so this would be condition three. Condition two is the monthly report, so I will still provide monthly reports. And then you could make condition three be, you know, maybe at the February evening. Staff comes back with. A proposed plan.
And then if you want to call it by. It's as soon as I have it from Steve Allen, I'll let Trevor know and then we can get him on the agenda.
I think we should also. It'd be nice, I think, to go to the TNT too, where we.
And when you say the plan, you mean the.
The temporary.
Short term repair plan.
Sure.
Thank you. All right.
And can you get me caught up, Trevor, on the conditions? I was looking at page twenty five. For tonight's, where there's just one.
So that, so you are extending the, you are extending the permit twenty twenty three oh three, and that had two conditions on it. And those conditions remain. I was just amending condition one, but the condition two would remain. And then you are at.
Okay, so technically the condition on page twenty five replaces or amends the condition from the original one. Gotcha, okay. So it'll be technically condition number three. Who knows? Maybe we'll have the main plan by then too, right? And all this will be a move exercise. I hope. All right, well, then I guess we'll take another stab at it. Is there any more discussion?
I would, like, this is not going to be the same paper as I voiced. I haven't thought about a lot of the longer support for your original. Did you? I said I would voice support for your original motion.
I would as well, actually. I, I think I like the idea, I'm also having thought about it some more. Take the four months thing. While I understand there's holidays and winter time, this is, we're only asking for a plan. And I think that really like set the. What concrete deadline. City to come back, just as something.
Oh, well, there's like two things there. One thing is plan, the other thing is extension. So I reconsidered the whole extension in four months. But but if you just want the plan within three months or whatever, like everywhere. It's a tradition.
I do think, I mean, because I think it holds us accountable the same way, really. Because we can't, even if we have a plan for temporary repair next month. Probably. Should put it in until.
I guess I understand that, but. I mean, personally, I'm prepared to not approve this. Motion should be handled. And I think that having it in four months is. It like puts pressure on the city, I guess, maybe, maybe we will approve it tonight, maybe we won't. But if it does get approved, maybe in four months, there will be people on this committee, people not, or this commission, people that approve it. I think the city is pretty confident they don't want this, this trail open, and so. I'm not trying to like turn it into like a hostage situation, but maybe in a little bit, I guess.
Yeah, so I'll just give you my perspective. I, I would think five months would make sense, which would put us somewhere in March. Because I would think the rainy season should definitely cover January. And then hoping that February is halfway decent, that we could start on it. And and then at least by March, hopefully it'll be done. And if it's not done, then might ask for another month or so extension.
Okay, so I'll ask the question. What happens if we do approve this extension tonight?
I would, I think staff would bring it to the city council. Because we can't, there's no way to open the trail. We can't just open the trail.
That's my point. There is no way that we can go through this process and every once in a while say we're going to. Not approve this extension because it's going to get kicked to the city council and they. Because it's going to get kicked to the city council, and they will. Immediately, uh you know, they override us, that's what I'm trying to say, is we're just not adding any value to this process. My my point.
Yeah.
A personal point.
And and I hear you, and and they may or may not override us, they have that right.
Of course.
But I'm curious, Tom, you know, you're on the Trails Committee, um do you have any thoughts we haven't heard, not to put you on the spot yet?
No, I'm I'm, what I'm hearing is, I don't want a way to tell. More of a to. Like that day, the day it's going to be open, one way or another, and I'm even considering putting a sign up here on the top saying, per Eli, it will be open. Or the day of the weekend. For the, for anybody to know. Or the city council, or whatever, or for for the planning. If that's what I'm thinking, I would live fire, and so the five months would then. To make it sound like there's this, there's going to be another option coming, whether or not we could step. Like. Years, something else is going to happen, and it's going to help them on. The same. Hey, you're on a good track.
Thing that you could do is, like with your proposed signage, is basically saying that. The commission has approved an extension to the plan. Give it an expired plan. At that time. So so I I'm just.
We just fill in the blank on a monthly basis, okay?
That's the last day injured, she just had a pay tag thing.
Technically, why, more of it, because I mean, one way or another, that's what I told people, and that's what I feel it makes sense, because it is a short-term fix. And uh, you know, no more than a few of the steps that I would see, at least just to give life, I mean, in the long term, you might want to replace maybe all the steps. But short-term, just something that that works. And then somehow having something down to the base, which might be, I I know before there was that somewhat like ladder had ropes on. So whether it's something like that, or actually steps, like a ladder, steps that you go down. Uh you know, somehow just safely get down there. Down there. Make it with some kind of rig. Just on the side. Yeah, it just seems like something like that, actually, once we get to the short-term, uh also. They could possibly be constructing, or would go there, you know, which would be big steps with. Stray line on the side. Sorry, then. They could put together a couple of parts, one part would be steps, one part, right? Just replace you with the steps. The same, what will it take to safely get down there to? Each other.
And just for my brain, I mean, technically, the city could decide to repair and reopen. I mean, they have that right as the property owner, right? I mean.
Uh I mean, under, so under policy sixty-nine, um there are certain approvals that are required for several services, so. How exactly that plays out, um you know?
Assuming there were still anchor points for the cable lock system to be reintroduced in new ones, in, I I I'm just theoretically, right? I I'm not advocating that at all right now as the approach, uh because I also appreciate that. You know, there's a balance we're trying to strike between opening it, but also allowing time for these discussions, which I feel are going at a relatively breakneck pace. Previous to, you know, my short time in this community, um you know, I don't want to derail those by pushing something like this into the mix and adding a new. You know.
You know, I I think. You know, I think. I mean, one scenario could be for if. I mean, a a a simple repair, I mean, um, yeah, I think someone mentioned it, one of our meetings, uh the temporarys of cable steps that they put at the bottom of the ag. Um, you know, so something like that, um you know, maybe not again. And and hopefully, the um ancestral society would agree to to something like that in the short term. If they don't. I imagine, I mean, that puts the city in a difficult position. Then if you approved an extension, it would likely be a field.
I would like that after the trail meeting yesterday, it wasn't curving, there was a good talk, and it did seem in good faith that. What's up? And hopefully, something really good, so I I'm just, we might want to get neighbors to. Be good at that, but yeah, we're.
It's also possible that regardless of timeline. That's in such a society.
It's just likely that whatever the plan is, they could think is great, and then we move forward with that, too, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, all options are.
Quite simple, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, okay, nothing's ours to change.
I I have one more comment, and I promise I can talk all my thoughts, because that um. November is the main season. And so our original. Closer, the end date of November. Was also the main season.
That's a good point, yeah. So. I think, from my perspective, I will support. This, regardless of the.
Which this is this?
Your your motion.
The original.
With the amendments that you made, I will, I will support that, I personally don't feel that it makes much sense, but I will support it, because I think we need, I think we need to move on here. And get the ball rolling again, and so I'm willing to uh support your. Motion as amended. But maybe you should read it back to us just to make absolutely sure.
Yeah. I know. Alright, um. Try this again, uh based on the fact that the current conditions of the base of the trailer hazardous and unstable. I move to extend the coastal development permit for the temporary closure of the ALMT for another. Four months as conditioned in the original approval with the modification of condition one as outlined below, and then maintaining condition two. And then adding condition three, which is a city manager doesn't need to return. Ideally before or nor later than one meeting prior to the next expiration. With a temporary reopening plan, and really encouraging. To be a lot sooner. Toward the end, but anyway, so that's how I knew it.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed, alright. Thanks, good discussion. It was. What I thought might take some time tonight. Alright, number two. So we're seven. Uh, I'll sign up the cultural historic resource element, Trevor, this is discussion only, as I understand it from the agenda, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, so. We do have a LCP grant, and one of the tasks is uh working on the cultural or. Uh preservation element of the general plan, um I did send copies of the version that you got out to both, uh well. To the Yurok Tribe, the Ranch Ria, and the TAS, um I did have a chance to get to meet with the Ranch Ria and get comments from them back in. February, I have followed up um with the other two groups, um I do, I did hear from the um. Depot of of the Yurok Tribe, the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer, and she has provided comments and passed it to their attorney. So that, I, they are moving forward with their comments, um and then we did hear from Sarah with the TAS, and. They had a lot on their plate with revealing um. Post all the hazards planning um report um and other other issues that they have been busy with. Um so they asked for more time um to look at this, and I assured them that this was. Not intended to be um approved at this meeting tonight, this is just the start of a discussion. Um I have not incorporated the Ranch Ria's comments, because I'm going to also. Yurok's comments. Right as well, um also, there's a missing section, so the the city attorney had advised me. To remove the section on. What I have in column, the tri management area, because that's, that's the twelve and a half acres, which is. A little bit different than what's mapped as the tri study area. But the tri ancestral society would prefer to just have the twelve and a half acres. All of the tri study area, because it's been referred to that in our management plan litigation for so many years, so um. I'll I'll put it back to the tri study area, and just it's going to be remapped. It is, um and so that's, it's a missing section anyway, again, names. Probably talked about some of that, so this is just the start of a discussion, um and there will be additional. Under input, so I just want to get.
Any questions on the staff report?
Oh, and then also, it also provides a update on other.
For the staff report?
Um, I guess I'll start. Um, so Trevor, um we have a substantial amount of uh uh. Background information in the appendix, how much of uh control do we have over those? Looks like a lot of it's mostly. I should say a lot of it looks like policy. Uh state policy, federal policy.
Yeah, I think the appendices, um and that was why I moved them out of the document, is um. There, let's see, so there are three appendices that I would leave. So there's a glossary, um. I think some of those are defined in other, and a lot of those are defined in other laws, um but I'm not a hundred percent sure on all those definitions. Um the tribal consultation guidelines are from state guidelines, but I think we should also add the city map. The consultation policy, so I think we should include that as well in here, and then appendix. Two. Two.
Yeah.
What would be, what should be appendix three is just a summary of the kind of law and state laws.
I just, yeah, wanted to understand. How much interaction we needed on that, um a couple of other quick comments, um one is that um. This is probably the place in the general plan, and I'm just saying this, take it for what it's worth. Where it might be very uh useful for the city to make a land acknowledgement statement. And um. Probably reasons, uh you know, but I think that that is, uh this is certainly an appropriate part. For um for the general plan. And um, you know, everybody has their own land acknowledgement statements, but I thought HCOGS was pretty good, although it's a little bit more gentle for the whole county. But um the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust also has one that's a little bit more tailored for. The um. Uh Yurok area. Yurok tribe area. Um the other, the other thing, two other things, one is, and I always say this, there's a whole bunch of programs in this thing again. I mean, we're programmed to death, uh it's just, uh and some of them look like it could be maybe condensed, collapsed into. Make them a little bit, but there's an awful lot of programs here, once again. And then the final thing, and um this is just something that I've experienced, I guess, over the last couple of years, is that with respect to paragraph B background. There's multiple stories to be told. And even among the different tribal organizations, there are different stories. And um this. Tends to be a a little bit Eurocentric. Uh but not is, and and there's nothing wrong with that, except that that's not the whole story. And the fact that we don't have the Yurok um. Comments. Or the ancestral society comments. Personally, I don't see any reason to review this until those comments are in, because we're, we'll be chasing our tail. Until we actually have. Uh comments from each of the tribal organizations, so um. You know, sometime, at some point, we will have to discuss it, but I I don't see any reason for it tonight, there's too many stories that have not been told. And then obviously, there's other stuff during it, but.
I got a question. So that you've reached out to the Yurok Tribe. And Ranch Ria. And that's it? Or?
I guess. And the TAS, you said, right?
And the TAS.
Yes.
I did, that's a good point, um so. When we. Had to look at what year. Um when I kind of restarted looking at the general plan, I did send out a formal um. Uh offers for a consultation on the general plan update in general. And that did include a much broader um list of tribes, so everything on that, we sent a request to. Native American heritage tradition, they sent all this back, and so I sent a letter to all of those, and we relayed responses without backing.
I just a general question, um the grant timing that you mentioned, what what what's that deadline that we're up against, just so we can kind of keep that in the back of our minds?
Already passed it?
Okay.
Um, no, I can't remember. Maybe, but but we did amend the the timeline already, it's because because also the coastal hazards planning process is behind, so we're already behind schedule on the grant, but it does go through the end of twenty twenty-five. Um that does include an update, and I figured it at least the whole last year will be updated, and zoning. But that could be done with the journey. There is time, I don't have it right in front of me.
That's fine, okay. And then with that, kind of falls to that, do you think it's likely that the missing section will be something that we could reasonably expect to include and meet that deadline?
I hope so, I mean, you know, litigation is, it is what it is, but I I. Um Eli and I are going to meet with Russ, um actually tomorrow, and then talk about, see, to my session, I guess, and then I think there has been a. Sort of trial date set for next.
Trevor, are you suggesting then it's not? Like wait for the whole document, or do you?
Oh, no, no, I'm just sorry, I I, well, I I would suggest uh B. And um. Probably um. Is that C?
Maybe a good portion of B and C, right?
Yeah, B and C, and then I, yeah, I I I think we can definitely work the uh. The uh, um. I'm reading it's kind of weird here, but general cultural resource protection on page four. This is where we actually get into the. Specifics, yeah, yeah, I I'm sorry, I.
Okay, no, I just, that's, I I just want to clarify, okay, um well, then shall we kind of go through page by page, and then maybe? Jump past those sections, does that seem reasonable to skip those sections until we get comments from the?
It does, I I have one more question.
Yeah.
First that, which is, do other. Uh do other cities on the North Coast already have local historic resources? Yes, I'm asking this because.
They they do, uh this was modeled after Humboldt Counties, because it was, it was a month three cent at the time. A lot of these policies are in. They're fairly general. Yeah.
I meant to revisit the seventy eight line, but this doesn't exist. This is a new creation for us, a new element, right? Okay.
And there is. Yeah, there is a policy. There's a couple of policies related to historic resources in general.
I did want to say I really, uh, echo Richard Sandman on a land statement. Thanks to be grateful for that. And so the city, I would totally support. Um, all right, page one, anything under the purpose, I guess, really jumped at anybody?
I have, I have a general question. It seems to me that there's this dichotomy between, uh, cultural resources and historic resources where. Resources tend to refer to. And then it seems that the historic resources tend to be skewed more towards. Well, buildings once white people shouldn't. Right, and I. I'm not sure that the economy needs to exist. Uh, like I know that there's. There's, you know, some of the various definitions, like especially science are included as buildings, but it does seem like the historic resources section, we'll get to this. It, it, it does seem sort of. Unnecessarily separate from. So if we on page one, there in the, in the outline, sorry, I didn't mention that.
I thought, does, does the laws treat them differently? But they can be more integrated, with ways of integrating.
I mean, I'll try to cite more specific examples.
Uh, I did just have, I know it's kind of delving a little bit into background, but on page three, sorry, anything on page two? We're kind of skipping, right, until we get some comments. I just had a question on page three, uh, the last paragraph of before C starts. Talks about there are currently two vicinity actions on a regular basis. It doesn't list the three. I don't know if that was intentional or it lists the UROC tribe and the, uh, the ranch area. Something to think about is going forward. Um.
Well, all we would have to do, whatever, is to say federally recognized.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tribal governments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even requiring common law. Coastal hazard.
Right. So then maybe make that clarification to this. At least contextualized. Um, anything in section C that thought we could? Like, I did have one kind of just general request for this to go through any acronyms, make sure that we're. Spelling them out the first time. There were a couple, N A G P R A, and then, um. An H C shows up in the appendix finally as under the definition, but the other one I, I could never find.
Probably because I took.
Yeah.
That used to be in the front. So, yeah.
So anyway, just, uh, I was like that at the beginning of the document to have that second. Broad level. Oopsie on page four. A question, um, under cultural one dot one. The, it, uh, the first line, identify potential physical impacts. And it says, design phase of city projects. And my question was, is that capturing only projects that belong to the city of Trinidad or any project that occurs within the city of Trinidad? What should be?
Um, well, it's, it is a procedural difference in that, um, we can't. You know, when we get an application, the design done. And we can send it, and I send it to referrals, um, to tribes. So we can't, we can't do consultation on a private person's design, but we can on this.
Gotcha. Okay, because the design, that's.
Perhaps maybe to say city sponsored projects.
Sure. What if it say projects, city to?
Yeah.
Was it important, Trevor, to you to have the design spelled out in that?
So, I mean, I think, um. You know, we've. And we should be consulting, I think, with the triers before we have, you know, before we submit a permanent application for city projects.
That makes sense. Okay. Um, anything else on page five? General stuff.
Six. Um, just a nit under cult dash one dot five, uh, work with sheriff's department. Uh, I would suggest maybe making that law enforcement agencies only because we never know where we're going to get our. Security from.
Oh, broaden it to include, you know, folks like, uh, the private security contractor, right? It's because they're a new.
Yeah.
We, we have a contract with them now for service, so they're going to be fulfilling that role. And then I have a general question, but how is that done? And is that really? You know, I, I just, I don't have probably the answer tonight, but what does that look like? The city working with law enforcement, security of the tribes to ensure that.
I think.
How does that happen?
Well, I think, you know, I think, um. And, and probably in general, they're becoming more aware of these issues in, in general, but I think, you know, making sure at least the person who's assigned to Trinidad is aware of. Where looting might occur or something like that. Um, there are specific training, I think, for law enforcement on how, you know, what the laws are and. What they have authority to do here, you know, let's see. Could be sending in a formal training. It could just be. Communicating with them about. What we're going to.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of, if we're going to put that in here, just understanding what it means. Did you have anything?
Yeah, the, the other thing they have mentioned, uh, meaning at the tri management team. We actually had, uh, one of the tenants from the sheriff's office. And, and I was going to suggest you support office abuse, charity instead of department. But anyway, a suggestion, one of the things that, uh, we, uh, tried. Thought would be useful would be to have some kind of signage saying, you know, if you see any kind of, uh. You know, from this area to call nine one.
Thanks.
And, and apparently there's, there was a sign up in Crescent City by, uh, St. George, which is by the airport. Crescent City, there's a lot of the beach there that they liked, similar to that sign. Anyway, they were suggesting a sign also.
You know, some six, about seven.
Uh, yes, under paragraph three. Oh, Trevor, I'm a little confused there. It says, the city must consult with tribes before design made in open space if the affected land contains a cultural place. And if the affected tribe has requested public notice, what public notice are you referring to?
Um, so. So this is, I believe this is straight from the secret guidelines. Eighty two consultations. Um, that process was a little different from the. The eighteen consultation where technically they are supposed to formally request to the city that they want. Send them anyway. So there's a, there's a notice of preparation. There's a notice of intent. So there's various notices that are required for, for secret documents.
Okay, so that's, that's what you referred to with the public notice raised under government code.
No, no, that was the general. I'll look at all of them. Get you some more information on.
Similar vein, is that a blanket notice that they can request from the city one time, or do they have to kind of be looking every time to try and? Just trying to, you know?
And we sent it anyway at this point, um, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Or anything else on seven?
Eight.
Uh, yeah, I guess a question. To, this is the city west of all these tribes that in about days. Okay, there.
Anything else on eight?
Um, yeah, under cult three dot two. Um, I, I, I get it all, and it, it talks about, uh, landowners involved in the particular planning activity and. And I was just trying to remember where I saw, but there was something else in here that talked about. The N D A, the landlord, landowner, um, uh, might have to sign. And some other policy issues. And I thought that maybe that should be brought up here to this point because this is the. The first time that we talk about landowners, it might be appropriate to, uh, bring that up at this, at this, uh, paragraph.
Three dot five.
Three dot five. Yeah. In fact, yeah, just move that to maybe. Right under three dot two.
All right, that was nine. How about ten?
I have something here, but I need to.
Or obviously, Trevor, that's the remove section, just for my brain. Okay, all right.
Uh, under D. The first whole paragraph, very briefly, leads to the tri village. Very next paragraph is about. Uh, what seems to be the face of. Settlement settlements. And I think that this is one of those, this is where. Sort of no explicit mention of the face of the pre-colonial settlements. Just example.
And i- is that first sentence?
Yeah.
Completely true?
It is not. It is not anymore.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Maybe just the smallest city.
I don't think it's even the smallest city.
Did we get Western ones to please? Well, I looked at that.
I guess it depends on how you find, how you define Western ones, actually.
Looks like Crescent City is further west, but I apologize to you.
Trinidad is nice.
We are the third smallest state. There's four hundred eighty two or never. Auburnian and Amundor City are small.
You shrink. Got it. That's the message. That's the messaging going forward.
Well, you know, we are.
Yeah. Or we can annex Los Angeles, right?
Trinidad is in California.
There we go. Um, just back to point four, Trevor, could you just put, uh, going forward and just a note in there, section temporarily moved on vice of city attorney, just so that anyone sees this without your staff report? Uh, okay. Anything else on ten?
We have less more of the five structures that were day making thirty, um, sort of bonus. What the appendix might be considered historic properties, including, uh, sites, building structures. So properties include artifacts, records, remains, religious locations located on such property. So. Think that additions to. Again, I don't know if we can add data or addition to the five structures erected by white people. There's other settlements that, that exist. Archaeological sites. Okay, just to establish where. Native structures and settlements.
It says, there's. Four structures. Ten hours. Kind of. So I'm sure you'll get feedback on that from. The others, but, um.
It said, three, I might tell it, read this whole paragraph. That in addition to those five structures, it's probably mentioning additional historic properties. Since that term includes properties of traditional religious book reports to any tribe or group of land organization per the definition.
Was that language you were suggesting to add?
Uh, five structures plus additional historical properties is what I think that's. In addition to those historical properties included per the definition. Sites of cultural problems to.
This might be a nit, but I thought the Memorial White House was built in nineteen forty eight.
Yeah, I think that might be wrong.
Yeah, we talked about buildings in the nineteen twenties.
Yes, it was. And I think it's just. Yeah, there's something that makes it sound like it was built before. I think that probably the original.
Certainly not the Memorial White House.
It is the Eastermost lighthouse in the city though.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Even if it's new.
Okay.
So when you refer to the, uh, original lighthouse, did you need to take for that?
Yeah, what was the date of that?
Eighteen seventy one.
Do you know, Eli, is that the, the structure that still exists up there today?
Right. Oh, wow. Yeah. Yeah, the city had our fifty, uh, hundred and fifty anniversary in eighteen, for eighteen seventy to, to the, to. And then twenty nine, twenty four. It's all great.
It's eighteen seventy. Thank you. You know, it. I don't even know how, you know, as we're talking about these things, this is just a very interesting and important. Thing to kind of do well. You know, this, 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 this long history of this place, right? I don't know if there would be any way, and I don't know how you would go about it, but almost a, a collaborative exercise for the writing of the history. In linear fashion of all the groups that play into the history and all. I, I don't, I don't know what that would look like, how that could even happen, but seems like a neat opportunity. Kind of. Airing one story. You know, I, I don't know, just popped into my brain.
Yeah, no, I actually, um, I mean, a lot of this is popping and pissing from various places. Um, we do have some. Lot of, um. The archaeological reports that have been done in the last few years have, have a lot of good succinct history. Um, you know, at first I really didn't have anything in here because I was asking others to write it, including the tribal groups, and it just, I can't got it. So I. Put something in here that I commented on. Um, but yeah, I would love that.
Yeah, so ask your questioner. That is, is I deal with that. Uh, when we did, uh, the. Celebration in twenty twenty, uh, we distributed in the city. So if anyone has come subsequently to that. Uh, let me know, and I can give you a pen. It was attached to a one sheet, uh, history that was prepared by Patty Questioner regarding this. And, uh. You know, when, when they celebrated the anniversary for the church this past year. Is, uh, the church, the Catholic church was Holy Trinity Church was built in eighteen seventy three. So when they celebrated that, that, you know, that history portion of it. Then they had a reception over at the museum and Patty Questioner had a bunch of pictures and this historical data. And I've had a nice tour there where she has a lot of information regarding the, uh, tri and. The jury and the legends. So she'd be a great source for.
Is there a curator of the museum, if so, is it Patty?
She's the best place to go.
Yeah.
Yes, they have other docents, but she probably will. Get them all organized to, to, to review this if we wanted them to.
And then the B L M may want to provide some information about White House. All right, uh, page eleven, I bet there's something that most of us caught, looking around and see. Knowing that this is taken from the county makes sense now, and, and Porta Suits versus City Council in, uh, one dot, one dot, four. Here's twice, just to. Uh, but anything else anybody saw on eleven they want to talk about?
Just a bunch of programs. Many I think could be collapsed.
And one dot, one dot two, I would get lobby for changing buildings to properties.
Building structures and sites, maybe something like that, yeah.
Again, keeping properties consistent with.
Be discouraged. Somebody's returning down that demolition.
Well, I mean, the city could consider, uh, a nonhistoric. Building ordinance. And designating certain historic structures. And those. And people can. Generally, it's an elective process, so there's incentives for getting tax breaks to be on the historic properties list, but then. Then there are restrictions for what you can do.
Seems like a planning commission. Like before you put on the. On the remodel. That's gonna add.
Yeah, I mean, I think, or I mean, you could consider it as part of your designer view, um. You know, we could. We have sort of got an inventory of what structures were built when, um, although I don't necessarily. Have all the information of what's been modeled since then. Um, but we could certainly, you know, as part of the staff report, um. Look at when the building was built and what characteristics are. I mean, it's just because something's old doesn't necessarily mean it's historically significant.
Discourage.
It could be, yeah, it could be part of your design review findings.
Where are you seeing that word coming up?
Um, history one.
Page twelve. Okay, sorry, page twelve, okay, cool. And just to clarify for me, Trevor, the city could create a historic district or a historic building ordinance. But an individual property owner would have to opt in, it wouldn't automatically. Somebody can't say, hey, your house is historic, you're now. Tied up with anything you may or may not want to do to your structure.
I, I believe that's the case, um. But then if, if a project rose to the level of CEQA. If you had to do a CEQA document. And even the exemptions, there are exceptions if it's going to impact historic resources, but without like a historic. Resource assessment, we don't necessarily know if something's historically significant. So, you know, I think it would be. You could also have a, an. Uh, regulation that says buildings over a certain age, you have to do a historic resource.
You have a program here that requires archival research to be carried out determining the cultural historic significance in one dot, three dot, one.
To add that, uh. Reminder, standing the federal government uses sixteen years. So anything after sixteen years is considered of great significance.
Two hundred and something structures in town and. Your report, I think, Trevor, somewhere I saw.
Yes, but they, again, it has to be.
Least of age to potentially qualify.
Yes, potentially, yes.
All right, anything else on twelve?
Sixty years, no, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I just, you get it, right, but there's historical links in those paragraphs.
I just wanted to mention one additional thing since you're on the subject, uh, I'm a member of the National. Uh, Trust for Historic Preservation, and, uh, it's a great group, uh, they, they send out, uh. Remember how often they send out their magazine, uh, it, it's at least quarterly, it might be more often. But in there, they show buildings from all around the country, then where they indicate saving, or they indicate that it was lost. They can save it. So, so, so there are good sources that, you know, if we have something such as a town hall, we feel like. You know, has some real historic significance. I think we could approach them and see, uh, you know, what's. What would be suggested for other buildings in the city if. It's, um, and then when I was city manager in Rio del, Alex Stone was on the city council in Arcata. Put together a group of about a half a dozen people, and they went through our city, created an inventory. Of all the structures, especially along Main Street, and then defined ones they felt were. So that is very useful.
So do we have a, at least an approximate account of how many buildings in Trinidad are currently. Labelled with the plaque that either says historic or. I can think of two.
That's cottage.
Probably just be, what, probably the, the art gallery?
The church, the art gallery, I'm not sure about the library.
Yeah, well, that was moves, so that changes, that potentially changes its historic.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah, yeah. I'm just curious if we knew.
But I mean, there's. I mean, those are the. Yeah.
That's true, right?
Um, but yeah, those are ones that are hundred years. And I, I do. A map's over ten years old now, but I do have a map that shows. When all the various structures appeared, um, into town, so you guys might be interested.
And then the, the rest of the appendices and not really much. Rest of you in there, right, Trevor?
I'm just noticing, uh. There's two things.
Yes, which, uh, the second up on the execution.
All right. Um, I don't know, Trevor, if it's worth, next time you reach out to them, I'll defer to you, but maybe just let them know that we're definitely very interested in all their input and. I don't know how the other commissioners felt about the idea of kind of trying to make it a more linear story of all the history kind of in one telling. And see if they had any thoughts on that or.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think also to Chris's point. How we. To take a prehistoric, historic. Historic resources, um. I mean, I don't, you try to what. Like this to be combined. I guess I'm just struggling to like wrap my head around that given what Trevor said, that they do have like different. Any work surrounding, like that's what I want from that, so. But I think that is like a. Good point and good idea, but I, I don't know how. It'd be a lot of reworkings to make that happen.
Yeah, and I mean, I think. Yeah, I think. There's a legal difference and then there's, you know, there's also the difference with. I mean, archaeological resources do have a lot of the same protections, it's historic resources. But the tribal cultural resources is more, the tribe is going to dictate. What happens and what's important, and the city doesn't really have. Out of necessarily say or control over that, um, where the historic properties are more, the city will dictate.
Just the background section could be broad.
Yeah.
If they don't live in isolation of each other, right?
But I feel like the idea of, you know, extending the same protections, similar protections to both, so I mean. They can cross reference.
Yeah, just when you add, uh, and I think Chris had touched on it, would be. So when you have, when we're cultural and we're historic, if we could like in both of those categories, talk about tribal. Interest and then talk about the other interests also, so that it doesn't show like a separation between. Cultural is just talking native, historic is talking. Because there, there's this, there's cultural and historic elements for, for everything.
Right, shall we move on then? Trevor, you've got enough?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, agenda item number three, policies on detached living space, continue from our last meeting. This was kind of the one that was about that inspection, right, and inform. The Trevor taking away.
Yeah, so we talked about this at the last meeting and we. The planning mission, um. Wanted to. Add to. Revised condition for to clarify. That inspections would not occur more than once during the year. Without agreement from the building inspectors and the administrator, the city manager, that another inspection was warranted based on. Evidence, uh, and so, and then you wanted to see the wording and you also wanted to get some input from. Building inspector, so I did reach out to the building inspector, um, and he. He thought the wording that I proposed here is fine, um, he did also mention for three, um. That it might be worse specifying that that should occur. The building permits are issues, that some people just gave a building permit. Restriction, and so I clarified that and then just. The planning commission had said based on that evidence and says. Is that evidence, so we could rework that, because, you know, this isn't CEQA, but, um. You know, substantial evidence is defined in CEQA, and I think it kind of makes sense with this as well, um. But I mean that. An overwhelming amount of evidence, but it's just. Enough, enough evidence that you can come to reason.
Any questions from commissioners?
I, I think it looks good.
I think it was Richard, I think, last night who, uh, defined periodic, or as I would suggest replacing periodic with episodic. That implies ridiculous false, so I would suggest replacing periodic with episodic.
Very with that?
Uh. The standard conditions for detached living space. At a forum, right, owner to agree to episodic inspections slash walkthroughs rather than periodic inspections slash. I'm sorry, uh, actually, it's going to be separate, it's one of two new.
Yeah, I, I take your point, I'm not sure this, to everybody gonna clarify things.
Yeah.
If we removed entirely, just had only a breach inspections, and then the next sentence pretty clearly. It's a frequency. Does that work?
Like that.
We don't necessarily want that.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think this is great, Trevor, I did have one question on, uh, I think it's. Thank you so much for running it by our building inspector and really appreciate his comments on three, and I really like that. I just have kind of just a question, let's say somebody pulls a permit and then never does the project. There is a process to remove a deed restriction, so they're not.
Yes.
Held to this thing that. Okay, just want to make sure something like that existed, but I really like that. Said we don't end a situation like happened with the, you know, the Davies project that came before us that had a deed restriction that for whatever reason didn't get. Accomplished or recorded, right? So that's pretty cool. And I. I kind of liked adding in to this. I really like the CEQA definition, and I, I would not be opposed to adding that in to substantial evidence in parentheses, what does that mean? That way, we always know what the intent of this commission was going forward.
I could say as defined in CEQA, or I could just add the definition. Maybe a footnote?
Yeah, footnote.
Okay.
But then I, I would. Suggest maybe as written today because of CEQA, for whatever reason, change that down the road, if we don't like it, then we're held to that. Versus if we put it in right now, word for word, that, that's what we, you know, I can't imagine changing, you know, in a meaningful way, but. And you don't have to go look up. Anything else?
So, uh, Trevor, we don't have to vote on this?
So I think yes, yes.
I just didn't see a motion.
So yes, we do, or no, we don't?
Yeah, she could make a motion.
Okay.
And approve or adopt this clause.
Well, I'll move to adopt. The detached living space standard conditions as presented. October eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, and as amended.
All right, first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, all right, unanimous. Moving on to more of the Trevor Show, policies for after the facts, planning permits. This, after the rhyme, rhyme or?
Yeah, so this was another one I think from the last meeting, um, where this was their second after the fact permit, and so. What would be inadequate deterrents? Not sure if we've had this discussion before, we presented a, a little bit of that background information, um. You know, it's, it's. It's difficult to find, um, kind of standardized policies for after the planning permits, and maybe it's usually planning events. Trinidad requires planning review for more types of residential projects than this one. So that's part of what's fine, um, and so, you know, there's nothing. So, and, and for building permits, it's defined in the building code. Be, so, um, but generally, you know, permits are. You know, it is pretty standard that permits are across us. And considering the findings and, and the requirements, as if. The action hadn't been taken, it might be a use, it might be a building, that's not necessarily always a construction project. And so it would be, you know, consideration of the findings as if. So you're not going to necessarily say, no, you can't do it and take it away, just. Yeah, so that's pretty standard, um, and other than. Yeah, so that's pretty standard, um, and other than that, you know, I don't. Other than fines, I'm not really sure what else there is, so I, I had a couple of things I did see. Also progressive rate structure, so if it's the first violation, that's a certain. Fine. Second violation, it's higher, so that might be something to consider, um, and then. Another problem is, is coastal commission where it's by times the permanent fee. Um, one of the problems though is for the coastal commission, it's a set. Fee based on the project, so they have a fee schedule where for, for Trinidad, it's, um. It's based on the actual cost, so for example, it's a controversial project, um. It could take a lot of time and then they're talking. Again, so. You know. By times the, um, fifteen hundred dollar permit versus a thousand or three thousand dollar permits, you know. And there are things where, um. You know, if, if something's not permitted whole, there could be remedial action, so. Obstruction, um. It's going to need to show what was done or what needs, you know, where since they got it counted, so. So those are things that can add to the costs and then be a deterrent, um. Yeah, I think. Part of it is more education outreach is another piece of that, um, and we do have some. Grant funding to work on our application forms and. Get some frequently asked questions on the website. Technically. And. Get something that. Send out a little postcard that says, hey. To new property, whatever it is, so I think, I think education outreach is.
Thoughts, questions, comments from commissioners others?
Usually that can suit the case, but, uh, you know, cutting a tree. That's another one we dealt with, doesn't matter the fact.
Yeah, and I got real open.
Yeah, yeah.
For your.
Uh, yeah.
There's potential other one coming to this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, outreach, you're right. Maybe some tea, five times. I found it all, five times.
Yeah, you know, five times not to exceed the sort of amount or something too.
That's what you tell what you need.
I mean, I like there, I know that. So when I went through this process getting an after the fact permit, um. I recall the commission was. Um, unclear about the meaning of extenuating circumstances. Whether or not to assess double the fine or double the fees. Um. And I guess like, I think having some amount, allowing some amount of discretion. To the commission, I think. In terms of how you, how they assess. It's going to be double or five times, um, is, and not just having a blanket. Policies is, could be advantageous, I mean, not everyone in this community is. Either financially equal or. It's equal playing field in terms of knowledge and our city policy, and as you acknowledged, Trevor. Our policies are pretty complex, especially regards all the view stuff. Uh, and I think it is like very plausible that someone. Could do a project knowing or thinking full well that they don't need a permit for it because they live somewhere else. So they didn't even think about that. And like. I don't want, I don't want, you know, five times the fee to be there at education, they need to get a permit. But on the other hand, like, people who are here. Last month, you know, like property owners didn't even show up, and so. They just pay this guy to be here, it's a harder fee. I think harder to be. So I'm like personally, I just like having some amount of discretion, maybe the phrase extenuating, extenuating circumstances. That isn't very clear, so maybe just discretion. Um, with some suggestions. Especially for serial offenders, I guess. Do what it wants then.
I suppose extending my due circumstance could be, oh, this is your second one, we're gonna do that more. It says, let's say whether that's more than us.
Something that struck me about being especially peculiar about that, about those reasons. There's an item about like. Whatever extent possible, construction shall minimize. Set of inventory, water sheds, whatever, right? And it occurred to me that, you know, you can always pull down, you know, some structure that can be erected, but there's oftentimes. You know, irreparable damage to, to environment, certain future resources that might occur if one. And, uh. In addition to, uh. Doubling or tripling or. Using some multiplicative factors to process the cost of permit. I think that there are maybe some consideration of the cost of the. Right, there is. These things, what's the cost of repeating? Should be on the book, whatever cost of review nation. That's, those are damages.
That's covered a little bit in. For reading, um, and, and we did have a big. It was a property on Teaneck Drive and they did. And they removed vegetation, they put in trail steps, they put a viewing path, that was a. Quite a bit extensive work. And so they were required to get, you know, a bunch of geologic reports. So it was approval, so it was not. Over the creation plan. The extensive.
Maybe at the end of three, just explicitly stating add competitive expense. Where expense, that's not my intention.
Yeah, I mean, even with a simple building project.
Yeah, we owe it to. All that talking that we just did about cultural intent, everybody knows that.
Oh. Guys, cost recovery, cost recovery for things that are priceless.
Well, I, I sure like the idea and maybe we can weave it in there somehow of. Of, uh. Periodically sending out, uh. Uh, some education reach information. Whether it's. So here. But, uh, occasionally just remind people, particularly about trees. It seems to be something that people just feel like they have. The right to do that, it's my tree. Um, so I really like that idea. And, and actually, when you think about it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Trevor, but the number of. Times that we have had multiple. Infractions. Uh, on the same property, probably. Kind of one hand, right?
Yeah.
So I, I'm not sure that, that, um, you know, from a. Practical standpoint that we get, we need to get too draconian when it comes to the fines. And I think with some outreach and doubling it for. Uh, uh, a second violation. Maybe it'll just turn people around, but I mean. I, I just don't know that, uh. We have that many that we're going to have to be concerned with. This one, the, the one last week, that was pretty blatant, I mean, there's no question. That's just horrible. But, uh. That, that I think is an outlier in many respects. And, and I don't think any amount of money would have.
Yeah.
Changed the outcome. Tell you the truth. I don't know, I mean.
So we, we send out a water bill right now. So something.
Yeah, it could be a water bill, it could be a separate postcard, um. I don't know how easy it is to send a different notice to outside customers versus inside city customer.
That's pretty decent list, right, the separate program.
So I mean, that's a little letter, I, you know, I think. Um. You know, maybe. Maybe the city should try and. You don't always know when properties change hands, but usually we do, um, and so there could be a little. Maybe it's the first water bill, maybe it's when, uh, maybe when they sign up for a new account, whatever. Someone gets a. Oh, by the way, you're in the coastal zone and. Different, you're right, my keys too. I mean, I think that's a lot of, so you know. People from, from Reading are used to everything.
Have, have we ever asked the county, you know, the recorder's office, we, we know exactly which parcels. By assessment number within city limits, if they get any business for that. They get a separate notification, can they provide that service? To us, you know, if, if we give them something, if, if they know they're recording a deed and they say this, this, it's in this book, this parcel, it's within city term, they get this letter mailed to them as well with their recording of the deed. And Catholic, that, I don't know, just an idea, um. But I, I had very similar thoughts, I mean, most of them surrounding education, right? And I guess it's a big piece, um, and I. I can't wait for the FAQs and proud, is that gonna be something?
Yeah.
There's somebody.
Maybe once we get those done.
Everybody.
Everyone.
Yes. Uh, I, I did some poking around on the internet and just for examples and things like that, really nobody has. Strong fee structure, um, that I found, Placer County has a, a very. Detailed after the fact. Uh, submittal requirements, one of them that requires a wet stamp. Uh, engineer architects testing that everything is very specific, all these things apply to standards, so I think there's going to be, you know, maybe a little bit of. Incentive of that, but a lot of places have, uh, an FAQ section that lists what projects do require permits and more importantly, what doesn't. Um, which is, you know, if you want to do this, have at it, you know, within these guidelines and, um. You know, what is the definition of maintenance and repair? How many square feet of sheet rock can you replace in your home? How much roofing can you do before it becomes? A permitted thing, or, you know, that type of stuff, I saw a lot of examples of that kind of stuff, um. Out there. Both on the website, I think, you know, the FAQ and then, you know, a lot of them tend to say, if you're in doubt. You know, if you're asking this, one of them even said, if you're asking if you need a permit, you probably do. Right, what was kind of like how they started theirs, and it was very well written, um, I can send you the links for the sites I found.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, just, you know, work smarter than her, steel, right?
On school, I think they dress.
Yeah, right. No, but yeah, I mean, I don't, but looking at some mechanism for change of ownership with the county, because that, that, every change of ownership happens there, it gets recorded there and. I don't know how we can get them to provide that service for us, but. If they can, that might be an easy place to catch it, because, you know, real estate agents and title companies are. Everywhere in the country and in the country right now, it's just. And then, I don't know, the idea of the. Graduated penalty, the more times you come before us with this, it gets. I don't know, it's not about merit, but I just struggle with, I don't want to really sing it to somebody that learns the hard way, just through no ill intent. Just didn't know any better. You know? I feel bad enough sometimes, double, you know, I mean, it's like. If we don't have a good way to figure that out, that's user friendly yet. Until we do, I don't really feel like I want to do any more.
Good insight. Yeah. Very good insight. That was sad to see. Getting through. Let us be sent here now.
Motivational, right? Need anything else really from this for us, Trevor, or is it more just kind of discussion than action for this one?
Yeah, I think, um. I mean, do you want me to add at applicant's expense to item three?
I don't know what this would be, but yeah, adding it in, I mean. Let's really spell it out, let's do it, yeah.
And I mean, this is something that. You know, we can put on the website.
Maybe it's, you know, I don't know, one, all fees and so, you know, and any work, restoration, inspection will be done at the applicant's cost. First thing they read, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Eagle. Anything else anybody wanted to see, another version that we can come back?
And then do you want to add anything in here that the city should periodically? I don't know if this policy is really placed for that.
I mean, I would hope it wouldn't need a policy to tell us to be. Good neighbors to our residents. Not opposed to, but also hesitant to put it until we have a resource.
Each of the city do something without a permit. Is that what you're saying?
This policy in addition to the standard procedures and conditions for applicants should also say. And the city should do its part by, you know, providing information about permit requirements.
That's your education outreach.
Okay, yeah.
Anything else on this one?
Is there general agreement to add something?
Well, uh, I'm thinking about that more. I mean, the. If you put that in here. I mean, I don't know that it actually really fits. When this policy, this is. That's not.
Yeah, I mean.
Fact, doesn't have any. And if you put it in there, someone who's. Like that you're having a fact, or the big one, they forgot to put it saying.
Well, could you add it to the purpose or, uh, under the purpose paragraph, say something to the effect that, um. Uh, in addition to these guidelines, the city shall provide. Periodic. Asotic.
Well, I think, you know, maybe, maybe it's something that, you know, ignorant rule is not an excuse, you know.
However, the city will make its best effort to.
He will, yes, maybe something like that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And then. in all this educational piece, you know, I hear periodically episodically, I hear occasionally from people at varying times. You know, the permits are just a money grab by the city. And these are, my understanding, barely a breaking in proposition for the city at some of our current rate structure. It's more about life safety. Right? For now and into the future, ID for building permits, that kind of stuff. I don't know if that's worthwhile to put in there as an education. It's just to really contextualize why the permits exist, so that it makes sure that you know what you're doing, that you build a structure so it doesn't fall down, so it doesn't catch fire. So, you know, I don't. It's just got my attention for the first time. Raise the responsible party. Soft and almost like it's like it's building. I guess maybe it is, right? If you see in the background, you see that? Yeah.
Yeah. The first party has the option to apply for these permits. I mean, yeah, as a map, it's more.
Did they really have the option? They mandated it? I mean, the city becomes aware of this.
As, as a, it would be as an alternative to removing
Yeah, or
they have the option.
Or alternatives if people actually are leaving on the front.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, yeah, they don't have to.
But then the city would do, yeah.
Unless it were unsafe, in which case the, you know, the city would imagine could forcibly cause you to remove something that's unsafe.
Oh.
I would hope. Trevor, if somebody builds something that's blatantly unsafe and unsound, the city could go and enforce them to remove it, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, I guess using legal action.
Yeah, you know. Has the ability to apply for whatever it was to come into compliance with?
Yeah, obligation. For permit work. That is otherwise consistent with the code of regulation. That's the obligation to apply for the permits.
I, I like, as an alternative to enforcement.
That's true. It could be any number of things, right?
I will mend this and bring it back.
Moving on to commissioner reports. Anything to report?
Yeah. Quite pleased to see, and Trevor, you alluded to it, that the both the commission bringing back the Van Witten trail. That was from the trail.
Yeah, well, so they, they heard for the appeal on the six month closure in their September meeting. They found no substantial issue, which means in the the six month closure, it technically start. So but they made it very clear that they want to see something in six and commission itself, not, not just staff. So they, they were not they, they made point that public access is important and that they want to see some solutions. And so we we have scheduled monthly meetings, actually, with the commission staff. So we've had two, two meetings. They, they were pleased with, with the progress we've made. I mean, it's I mean, it's ticking by very quickly. We are and, you know, I'm not sure that we're going to have solutions set in stone in six months, but we are making progress.
You have confused, but I'm talking about one that goes to a part of them.
Yeah.
Eighteen months, so that one?
Yeah. So, yes. But it's, I mean, it's it's super complicated. I mean, it's super complicated because the the TAS in New York, Travis, they want to close. Coast Commission has said they want it open. There aren't super easy fixes. It's already kind of up on credit property potentially. And then there's the stormwater drain also complicates things there. So it is, it's not a simple.
Water piping going through there as well, right?
The water pipe will be, that will be but the storm drain, there's really no other solution except to pump it.
Kind of the beauty of water and
But can't, it can't be infiltrated there. It's about getting the pipe across the slide with that end, because we don't want the pipe to fail.
This is great. And there, there's a couple of different options. Anyway, we'll see. So exciting to meet there. Anything else? On signage, you're looking at signage, you have any creative science out there in the world that you went into? That's yeah, just any information to make it better. Looking at the benches of what's benches.
Along that same page, we talked about gate at the top. Road, rock, lane. Notice when I walked by there today, they made like a little hat dish so that you can walk around it, but I could use a sign there, one of our trail signs. There's one, there's two gates on there and lower gate has
Great, thanks. And it was recommended from Nancy Sestra, it's like some, something that can be pounded into the ground was preferable to divvy something up and put concrete in. So that's about there. That's, that's a start right there, leaving stair system or something. It's like how to put it into the ground. That's what I meant by encouraging from what I heard. They weren't mentioning that for the trail, but that was going to be bigger.
I don't think so. The water advisory committee met finally. We have another meeting coming up in November. We decided to meet a little more frequently right now. I've just some highlights from that. They did really like, or agreed with our approach and just kind of continue to monitor water usage rather than taking it again right now. No need as far as data info. We feel like they're getting everything they need. There's not really assistance from us. Very much like the idea of Trevor's postcard mail or suggestion and the one we kind of talked about to show your year over year user, month over month, whatever format that would look like. Just some update on our water treatment plant. We currently have a T two that is ready to take their T three exam shortly, which in theory will put us having our own city employee now that can run the plant. And we would then be able to back away from the unsustainable Coleman Engineering contract that we have right now, that we continue to have, which is I pointed out, the north of $600,000 since we first began that contract with them. Behind that individual, we have an operator in training who is taking their T two exam beginning in November. And then there are other employees, some longstanding employees that are becoming interested in the water program at plant. So cautiously, the majority of the, of the committee was cautiously optimistic. I remain skeptically optimistic because I, my belief is that we're not corkscrewing, we're coming back around on the merry-go-round to the same thing again, but we keep coming and hoping plan A is going to work. And when it doesn't, we do plan A again, plan A again, plan A again. At some point we do go up to plan B, whatever that would be. There was also some questions about the Consumer Conference Report that came out. If you're familiar with that, it comes out, published, I think in January of every year for the water sampling that happens in July. There were two values that were noted by the community. One was Ecoli that there was concern over. It turned out that was just understanding the I think in poorly designed state mandated table, it was showing a maximum allowable value of one sample. And it was being interpreted, oh, we haven't, that's just the max, our reading is zero. The other one that came up was copper in the water lines and an educational piece that all of us are learning is that copper levels are measured at, I believe it's 10 different particularly residences who turn this points in our system, not on the planet. Mine has no copper. So any copper readings that show up in the system from these tests are going to be a result of somebody's personal pipes. And it was one that was out of value. So on the report, it looks like we've got copper in our water, but really one, two, three Main Street has copper in their water and everybody else. So it was just kind of an interesting thing to learn. But with that, we're want to make that report less boilerplate and dry and a little bit more user friendly, the information more accessible, because there's a lot of communities around us that do a better job. So that's something we're tackling. I think that's it for the whack. Was there any update about the chain replacement project? Yes, there was. It was just an update basically on what the council decided that we had to change the scope. We're not getting I think it's, I believe it's a 300,000 gallon tank. Now we're going to get 250,000 gallon stainless tank. We're still sticking with stainless because it's the durability of it. So the plan is to go with two, two fifties eventually instead of two, three hundreds. So losing a little bit of overall capacity, but that's still going forward. You can strengthen it under way with that? The prep work, there's a tree survey, I think, that has to happen first. The trees are going to get disturbed. And so all those things are kind of happening. And then of course, weather, rainy season, but it is in progress. And it takes a bit of this now or there.
No, no.
Yeah. On water pressure. A copper in your line.
That unpermitted word, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't have anything other than
On Monday, we had the STR committee meeting, which first grant. Engrossing. I mean, very little stuff of consequence to us was mentioned. I guess regarding tonight's discussion, there is there's been an effort to do better cost tracking of what an STR application actually costs. And there was a recommendation made to the council to update the fee structure in which have those, those costs? That was the thing we did was make that recommendation to the council. Tell them if not, but otherwise that's what we got there. There's technical glitches. Everything that the chair said, you know, I had to repeat. Right. Trevor, anything else from a staff standpoint?
So I do still have some things to wrap up. So leave and S P two grants are done, but there are unfinished things that we still have to wrap up. My regulations. Been working on those. I am, I think the coastal hazard planning project is far enough along. I'm going to start getting the background report. Take the element. So getting back into that, updating that report, so we can get safety element. So getting back into the general plan update, the L C P grants and three grant tasks, which were start with the background annexation. I did update our future agenda items. I think we the management plan is we're, we're updating, we're incorporating that into the the cultural resources elements. Some of, a lot of that was found in the section on city area. Yeah, it's in there. And rainwater catchment. We're working on both the demonstration project and some free group. So I took those off and then I added annexation. I guess just one other question is I I've been doing staff reports that aren't staff reports in a memo format. And then this month, and I'd done it in the past too, that I so this is a little bit different. Staff reports looking like this. So if anybody has a preference or comments on the memo format, there's a piece format. It's more follows more of the C company.
Right. Anything else for future agenda items?
It's going to be that
Oh, cert training, yeah. Here's a waitlist. If you're interested, please sign up. I'm reluctant to establish this as a feature, but that's thinking back to discussion from tonight and several previous discussions, it would be nice when we're making decisions related to resources to know realize there's legal issues there, but I'd like to explore it to whatever extent possible. Not a survey of those resources, I think that sort of, but just sort of knowing the types of resources we're talking about, et cetera. So security things that we as city makers can make informed decisions. Yeah, there was legal issues there. Get an assessment of some kind of the types of resources that we're discussing.
I think that's something we can see if we can get in the cultural resources.
Jack, we'll give you one shot as a member of the public up there. Do you have anything? Been ignoring you all night. Apologies. Nothing?
I'm good. It's just been great listening to you guys tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Jack. All right. Then with that, we are Jared. Oh, yeah. That's it. Nope, we're good.